Okay, the clock shows it being six PM. So I'd like to call the city commission meeting for Tuesday, February 20th, the order. And first order of business is roll call.
Mayor Butler.
Here.
Commissioner Adam Chack.
Present.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Here.
Commissioner Mata.
Here.
Mayor, we have five commissioners present. The quorum of three is met.
Okay, excellent. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next order of business is commissioner comments. So John, good? Peter?
Friday at five o'clock, the library sale starts. It's at the library this year. You have to be a member to come on Friday, but membership's only $10. They have a lot of wonderful books for the book sale.
Yes, I'd like to request that resolution F3 be removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, we can do that. We'll move that to the first item after, after the consent agenda, and that's item F3. Okay. And then for those of you that weren't present at the Douglas Center this morning at 10 o'clock, they unveiled the statues. So if you've got some time, drive by there. There's four statues in place, two, two schoolchildren, and of course, the, the two Army veterans of, of World War II. A really outstanding addition to that little historic center there. So there was a good crowd out there today and a good panel discussion. So, so a great addition to the city and a great piece of artwork if you look at the details on those statues. Very well done. Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda. Now, items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which had previously been reviewed by the city commission and may be approved in one motion. And the commissioner may request an item be removed from the separate discussion and considered immediately afterwards, which we've done for item F3. So any comments on the consent agenda from the commission? Okay, seeing nuns, or any public comment on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, then we can entertain a motion to approve the agenda minus item F3.
I so move that we consent, approve the consent agenda minus item F3.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Adam Chack.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Mayor Butler.
Yes.
Motion carries, five to zero.
Okay, then we'll move on to item F3, and Susan, you can take the lead on that.
Yes, this is a resolution relating to sponsorships for city departments. It establishes, we have a procedure which establishes guidelines for city departments to enter into contracts with organizations to sponsor city facilities, programs, services, et cetera. The city does not allow sponsorships from entities whose sales, business, reputation, or advertising are substantially related to drugs, tobacco, or firearms. Last year, the Kansas Legislature adopted House Bill 2100 that prohibits cities from giving preferential treatment to or discriminating against a company based upon any environmental, social, or governance criteria, including the manufacturing, distributing, and selling of firearms. I recognize that this item is to have our city resolu-, city codes be in compliance with state law, but I would like to, I am disappointed that we are being asked to alter our regulations in order to potentially allow the advertising, the support of firearms manufacturers on city, for city events. And so I would just like to have a voice vote on this particular resolution.
Okay, we have to, I guess Katie, quick question for you. We have to follow the state statute, correct?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so there really isn't any option, but, but the state statute, did it just say firearms, or did it, did it?
Just fire, well, it has other criteria in that, in that group, but the one that's relevant to our policy was firearms. The other things that are mentioned in the state law are not contained.
Okay, so we still don't have to do drugs or any of those other things?
Correct.
And then my other question is, it, it says we, you know, guidelines to enter into a sponsorship agreement, but that doesn't mean we have to, right?
I guess if, Mayor, do you mean if it, if it meets our criteria, otherwise, the sponsorship, we have to allow that opportunity for people who we can't discriminate against? It is pretty limited in the bill, and the resolution speaks to that. It's a company, so it has to be a for-profit company that's primary business is, and I think the exact words are in here, manufacturing, distributing, or selling firearms. So that's, that is like a specific category of business. It's not any organization related to firearms. But typically, if someone were to, if someone in that category wanted a sponsorship and it otherwise met our criteria, and we would grant it, we would need to do that. If it didn't meet our criteria, we never have to grant a sponsorship if otherwise it doesn't fit with our policy.
Okay, but, but, but we're not going to have to deal with drugs and tobacco and that?
Correct. Those things are still excluded from sponsorships.
Okay, well, that, that's, that's good. Okay, any other comments?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, it seems like we don't really have an option of denying it.
Yeah.
We can't overturn the state law, but, but it's a good discussion.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely brings in, you know, the home rule. It's certainly one of those times that the legislature has chosen to override that. And yeah, I can definitely understand why you'd be disappointed, Susan. It makes a lot of sense, so, yeah.
I agree. It's always interesting that the state passes these rules and regulations that apply to us and that so many of the state legislators have been either county or city commissioners. You'd think that they would have a little more understanding and sympathy and be willing to work with communities and not just pass laws by fiat. No additional comments.
Okay, is there any public comment on this particular topic? Okay, seeing none, we'll, we'll close public comment and take a motion to pass the resolution in F3.
I'll move to pass the resolution in F3.
Second.
Do we need to read the whole thing? We have to read it all. You'll have to read the line there on F3. Or I can do it. We move to approve resolution number 022024-C, establishing guidelines for city departments to enter into sponsorship agreements with third parties for the support of city assets, facilities, programs, services, projects, or events, and repealing resolution number 042412-Alpha.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you please call the roll?
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Mayor Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Chack.
No.
Motion carries, four to one.
Okay, that takes care of the consent agenda, and items removed from there. We'll move on to the general agenda. Comment from the public related to any item on the general agenda that the city commission is allowed. Each person will be limited to one speaking opportunity for up to five minutes for each item in this section. So the first item on the general agenda is consider contract and amendments for Aggieville Public Infrastructure Improvements, AG 2202. Jason, you can take it from there.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, this is a continuation of an item that the commission entered into contracts back in April of '22. We had agreements with both Olson and BHS to construct public improvements in and adjacent to, nearby to Midtown Development. Obviously, last spring in '22, some of those projects were halted. We've since renegotiated and have development agreements with Midtown and Handy Corner for their construction, which we anticipate will start this year. Our prior agreements with Olson and BHS, construction manager risk relationship. So we had selected BHS because they were building the Midtown project at the time to go ahead and construct the alley and 12th Street and Laramie improvements that were identified. The project itself has, has grown. We have extended into the 1100 block of Laramie with the Handy Corner project. And in doing so, it has resulted in additional street, alley, right-of-way type of improvements. This map is probably the best description that we've generated so far. 12th Street from Moro to Laramie in the green, and then Laramie from 12th to North Manhattan. This was the original anticipated design and construction. This is back in April of '22, but we agreed with Olson to go ahead and finalize design, and we agreed with BHS to bring back a guaranteed maximum price. The memo lays out it's a little over $560,000 in a design contract. Before the construction was, was halted for the private development, we had spent a little over $120,000 with Olson on that design, so we had not finalized it. We had seen some concepts internally, but we hadn't even brought those back to the commission to get final direction on where you, where you really wanted to land from an infrastructure standpoint. 12th Street curb, well, it's actually building to building. So it gets into the details of the sidewalk, the sidewalk dining, any type of roadway improvements. Laramie had drop-off zones that we previously had designed. So now that, now the scope is expanding, and Olson has submitted another amendment to the contract to go ahead and include that, that section of Laramie from 11th to 12th Street. We've also picked up 12th from Fremont to Laramie. We, we're going to take a look at these. Fremont to Laramie on 12th can be phased in more than likely later, but we want to make sure we get this design in the works so we're ready to move into that section as soon as we can, come off Laramie and the 12th Street construction. The alleys, we've identified in, in terms of putting them back permanently in, in a, a format that, you know, the commission needs to weigh in, the community needs to weigh in, the district needs to weigh in on that final product. We've talked about redoing the alleys from the beginning. We've talked about burying that overhead line and readjusting some of the subgrade infrastructure in order to create that safe environment for the pedestrian and for the vehicle. We have poles in the middle of our alley, not in the middle, but on the edges of our alleys now. We have things overhead that are, can be, they're aged infrastructure. There are other ways we can provide that infrastructure, and going below grade is, is the plan. We have been engaged with Evergy to go below grade. Kansas Gas Service is going to have to move some of their infrastructure in order to accommodate that. And Olson is, and BHS are, are going to be our partners with the design and eventual construction. The additional scope that we also laid out for BHS was for project management. So it'll not only be 12th Street and Laramie Street. We'd like BHS to also supervise what's going on in the alleys by way of public infrastructure. This way, there's a cohesive and a consistent presence in Aggieville from the contractor's perspective, so they can communicate effectively with ABA. They can communicate effectively with adjacent owners. And they also are very well involved in Midtown Phase One and the Handy Corner and Midtown Phase Two. So they'll be able to provide information on both the public side and the private side with any and all constituents in Aggieville. And back to the city administration, which would then obviously hopefully trickle to you all as well for updates on, on just how we're progressing. We really have the rest of 2024 to finalize design. I would anticipate a GMP close to the end of the year from BHS, so we'll have a better feel for what it's going to cost. But in the interim, we're going to need to look at designs. We've already targeted a meeting in late March, either the 19th or the 26th, where we can bring back some concepts and get feedback from the commission on primarily 12th Street, Laramie. There's some additional scope within this project to address trash. This is the opportunity, based on our analysis and our prior engagement with consultants, both these half-blocks being under reconstruction, redevelopment, gives us the opportunity to look at trash comprehensively. We've asked Olson to include some specifics within their scope to where they can give us alternatives in the alleys or adjacent to the alleys where we can have consolidated trash. If you recall, off Little Moro, we worked with both the owners of the Rally House Building and Bill Varney and Joe Gritten over with Good Sense and Insomnia Cookies and Quick Shop. They now share trash services off Little Moro. We built a facility that's big enough for a compactor in the event we get there, but we're, we're not jockeying for trash, and eventually, we need to address grease as well in dealing with those in every business in Aggieville. It overwhelms you walking down a lot of the alleys in Aggieville. We'd like Olson to develop some concepts and alternatives for the commission to react to. We have studies. We hired consultants previously. When Olson brings back some of their alternatives, we'll include that report again. If you're interested now, we have an Aggieville page that's based in the community development website. If you want to go to the community development website, click on Aggieville. The trash report is in that sequence of documents and actions that we've taken in Aggieville since 2016. So there's a good seven and a half, eight years worth of history there. The trash and refuse report is there on how we could handle some of that. So if you, if you want to get a jump on that read, please do, but we've asked Olson to bring some alternatives back for the city to consider with trash. Just as a reminder, the main controversial item with trash is it would be consolidated and either administered by a single party, and it would take away the ability for individual businesses to contract directly for that service. So that consolidation is really what we're after. We know we've heard some, some resistance to that. There's some relationships with businesses and providers that are longstanding, and we, and we know there's a resistance there, but we'd really like to make a decision one way or another because after this two-half-block development, I think we're going to be pressed pretty hard to find another opportunity to do this. So. I'm happy to answer any questions. The, the agreements, obviously, we're a little bit over 900K on the design now, bumping up from that 560 mark. I know Mark Bashamp's here with Olson. He can expand on the role Olson will have with this project. I know Patrick Shutter's here with BHS as well, so if you have questions of them, please don't hesitate.
So just to clarify, we're pretty much just voting on the expansion of scope at this point, right?
Yeah, yeah, a couple contracts you're amending.
Okay. Will we have the opportunity to, along with design, talk about like timing of all of these things and how we'll be able to minimize the impact of businesses?
Yeah, the public improvements, obviously, as I mentioned, coordinated with the same contractor building the private improvements.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of our improvements will come towards the end of the project.
Okay.
The impact of the private construction on the public infrastructure is probably more concerning because that's obviously going to take more time. The need for them to be on 12th Street or on Laramie shutting down lanes, possibly shutting down streets at periods of time, cranes swinging big pieces, we got to keep people safe.
Right.
I know there's a desire to move through there, but safety is going to be a top priority. But that sequencing is something that I would anticipate. As we get into designing a public infrastructure, more clarity will come from the private side, and we can get those, those timelines overlapping each other and, and talk and get people really informed. April of this year, a lot's going to start.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the developers here tonight, along with this team, they might be able to jump in there and provide some updated schedules. You also have to consider final development plans from Midtown One and Two. So Handy Corner and the Midtown owe the commission final development plans, and they can't pull a building permit until that happens. That's another opportunity for us to talk about timing.
Okay, thanks.
I would just urge us, having been on the county's Solid Waste Committee for many years, to, to consolidate as much as we can. Obviously, there are, I'm sure some businesses will have some issues with that, but they won't be there forever. And if we don't do this and do it right at this point, it'll just hang over us. Also, it'd be interesting to see if we can consolidate the grease.
Yes.
Because you can then sell that if you have adequate amounts of it. And, and, you know, when the health board was doing, the health department was doing inspections of restaurants, that was often a significant issue, and too much of the grease was from many restaurants in Manhattan was going into our water system, which is, of course, makes it difficult to treat.
Two different programs there. We have our, our grease trap program in which we inspect and make sure those businesses are catching it and disposing of it. I've worked with Dennis Cook and the Aggieville Business Association in the past. We've identified vendors. There are folks who will actually come in, set up small PVC pipe throughout your building, and you're able to basically pump it out and not have to carry it through a door to an alley to dump in a container. We'd like to explore that as well.
Yeah, I would, I hope we can.
Yep.
I hope we can reach that point because it'd make a lot of sense.
And, and Dennis can, can confirm this. It was my impression those companies would actually come in and install the PVC. They just wanted that relationship with you for the coming months.
They probably need to have a, a group decision on this.
Yeah.
And, and make sure it's worth their while to, you know.
And it's something we can, we can get involved with too in terms of requiring it. Again, not sure how much with trash and grease government presence you want to have there. There are options. It clearly gives us a better product when we force everyone to do the same thing.
Yeah.
If it's voluntary, I think you can walk around right now and see the ones who are willing to do it.
Yeah, I think it's gonna, we're gonna have to be the ugly sister or something.
Yep.
Yeah, I want to say, I think, you know, this comprehensive look is important because long-term, we needed to fix the alleys and do a bunch of things. So it's essential we do that. I, I particularly support this trash and grease plan. I know that may cause some pain, but that little enclosure that's out there on Little Moro that some folks thought was a new Aggieville sign, that was just a little amenity put on there. And, and long-term, if we can get a number of those built and then put the trash compactors in there, it will allow, you know, better trash service. And, and, you know, if you walk down those alleys in, in Aggieville, it's pretty grim with the, with the grease and all that there. So, so this is something we need to do, and, and there are going to be those hiccups on who gets the contract and, you know, some little agreements there, but, but I think, as Karen said, we're going to have to, we're going to have to force this issue, or we're not going to get the improvement. So, so I'm, I'm in favor of this. Okay, if there's no other commissioner comments, we'll open this to public comment on this topic. Come forward. You can speak up to five minutes and be sure you state your name and address and sign in.
Mark Bashamp with Olson, and I really don't have anything else to add to what Jason already talked about. It's that, you know, we're over-doubling the size and, and including the alleys now with the project. So there's just a lot of stuff going on here. And to work with both private and the public together and solving, there's a lot of issues that we have to work through with doorways and, and, and everything all tying together all. So it's really a good partnership right now between the public and the private side. We're meeting all the time now and trying to figure this all out. So I think in the end, it's going to be painful getting through the next couple of years, but I think it's going to be very well worthwhile.
Mark, in your design, it would be really good, I think, if you had the possibility of having electric vehicle charging stations throughout. And I don't know, you know, at what point we move into that kind of thing, but I think that there's going to be a demand. I know we have issues with how do we deal with Evergy and that kind of thing, but simply the ability to do that, I think, would be very important.
I think we are looking at that, and that's probably for some later, later comments that we probably, that's, it's being looked at. The, the thing is, we got to have power down there and then power to do it.
Yeah, that's what I meant. There's no use, not simply wanting to.
So discussions with Evergy and.
Yeah, you don't want to go back and dig up the street to put in power, is what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, you know, even if we don't initially have the power in the stations to have the ability to have them, would be really smart.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. And any further commissioner comments? I have one, though I probably don't, don't agree with Karen wanting to put in the electric charging stations, and that's simply because, you know, I've always taken the position, I don't have anything against electric cars, but the city doesn't run gas stations, and so therefore, the city shouldn't run charging stations. My belief is that if the demand is there, some entrepreneur will figure out how to do this, you know, using a Casey's or something of that nature. And, and the added expense of doing that and the city taking that on and trying to manage it with charging, with Evergy, I'm just not inclined to, to go there right now, and I'm expecting the entrepreneurs of the world to step up with a chamber to make that happen.
Well, I'm not suggesting the city take that over. I'm simply suggesting that we have the ability to have those there without having to redesign our curbs or anything like that.
Yeah, that, that makes sense if it's over by the gas station or something, but, but I just can't see the individual businesses, you know, having those out front. I mean, we, we've got one down at the Discovery Center. I think that was part of the, the issue doing that, which I know is used on occasion, but I, I just can't see city parking lots having that, so. That's a, you know, for further discussion. So any other comments? Okay, then we can entertain a motion on this particular amendment. It's a long one. Is Peter going to do the honors and read that one?
Yeah, I'll try again here. All right. I move to approve and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute contract amendment number one in the amount not to exceed an additional $357,827 to the professional services contract with Olson, Inc. of Manhattan, Kansas, and an agreement with BHS Construction, Inc. for project coordination professional services in an amount not to exceed $106,843, or $106,843, and a First Amendment to construction manager at-risk agreement for pre-construction services with BHS Construction, Inc. of Manhattan, Kansas, and an additional lump sum amount of $5,000 for the 12th Street, Laramie Street alleys and associated public infrastructure.
I'll second the motion. So we have a motion and a second. City clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Mayor Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Chack.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Motion carries, five to zero.
Okay, then the, the next item is a discussion item, and that's to discuss applying for state historic preservation grant to hire a consultant to develop a historic preservation plan. And the Historic Resources Board has already looked at this and recommends we do so. So take it from there.
Yes. Good evening. Ben Schmuel, Senior Planner, Community Development Department. I don't have a presentation for you, for you tonight, so this will hopefully be pretty short on my part. I think it's pretty straightforward as to the information that's been included in your packet. But just a quick recap, last year, the State Historic Preservation Office, or SHIPO, at the state of Kansas, notified us of some excess funding opportunity that they had. The state is required by the federal government to pass through a certain amount of funding that they receive to certify local governments. Manhattan is one of those. So staff went to the Historic Resources Board to notify them of this opportunity, and a few different ideas for what the city could use that funding for or apply for was discussed. The HRB ultimately landed on a, a project to hire a consultant to create a citywide preservation plan. The scope of that work was, is discussed a little bit in the packet, but ultimately would be. in the packet, but ultimately would be narrowed down in a grant agreement or an RFP that the city would issue to actually hire a consultant to do that work. So we don't necessarily need to discuss that tonight. But the, the HRB did make a formal recommendation to the city commission to direct city staff to apply for those funds from the state. The state would require no match, which is unlike regular grant opportunities that they advertise for. Normally, a 40% match is required for projects like this. Similarly, there is a much higher amount of money that is available for this particular funding opportunity. Normally, funds are capped at about $30,000 for their regular grants. So the HRB really saw this as an opportunity to build capacity for preservation work in the community, but also take advantage of an opportunity to apply for a more big-ticket item than they would normally be able to ask for. So I'd be happy to answer any questions. Ultimately, we're looking for direction from the commission on what to do with, with that recommendation.
Okay, so my question would be this grant, essentially, some firm is gonna be paid grant money to develop this plan?
Yeah, that would be the idea.
Okay, and, and will it, will it include both public and private property? Because some of the historic designations are not owned by the city.
It certainly could. Most preservation plans are, are citywide, so they look at all assets, public or private.
Okay. And, and there, there really is no long-term impact as far as employees or things like that. If we, if we apply for this grant and get it, it'll, we'll end up with a product that we can put on the shelf and refer to, correct?
Yes, yeah.
I think this is a really good idea because I think while we've really clearly identified the historical properties sort of in the downtown area and moving out from there, we, we also have some architecturally interesting housing throughout the city. Not, and of course, there's also the stone houses that, you know, were farms that are still in existence. So I think the idea of getting an overall picture of what is out there, I know that the Commerce Bank is thinking about removing the bank, and it's a, a prime example of mid-century architecture that we really should try and save somehow. So if we can do that and know what's worth saving, what's valuable, and what really has an aesthetic value to it, I think that would be great. And, and then also, I think it might be easier if we go to someone and tell them why we want to save this piece of property or this, this business or that kind of thing. So I think, go for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think having a, you know, a recommendation or policy, something like that, helps us kind of decide what's historic and what's just old. There's a lot of buildings that, that, that have been around for a long time, but, and maybe folks just want to keep because they've been around for a long time, but there's a difference, I think, between that and a historic building. So, yeah, I think this would be great. It's not gonna cost us any money, so, yeah, I don't know why we wouldn't do it.
Sure.
Where would this study person be housed?
So they wouldn't be a city employee. They would just be a contractor.
That would come and go?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Usually, there's a, a project period that the state requires. Typically, these are about a year and a half. So we would develop a contract that had milestones that they had to meet by a certain deadline.
Yeah, I'd say it just helped give some clarification when people want to do something, then all of a sudden, oh, we say that's historic, and then there's a big controversy and thing goes up. So if we can kind of know that ahead of time, it'd help.
And, and just to clarify, this, this study wouldn't decide that things are, you know, officially historic or not. It would give general guidance as to maybe classes of buildings or periods of significance that could be explored by either the private sector or the public sector. So, you know, nominations wouldn't, nothing would be nominated through this process, but it would give the city, both citizens and, and the city of Manhattan, tools to then potentially pursue nominations if it so desired.
Okay, Susan?
No comment?
None? Okay. All right, then let's open this to public comment. Does, does anyone have a public comment on this discussion item? If so, you have five minutes maximum, and please come forward, state your name and address, and please sign in.
Good morning, good afternoon, Commissioners and Mayor Butler. My name is McCharney. I'm at 1420 Waterford Place, right here in Manhattan, and I currently sit on the Historic Resources Board. But I'd like to make it clear, first of all, that I speak only for myself. I don't pretend to speak for the board as a whole, but I would point out that we passed this, this request unanimously. Instead, I speak in terms of my bona fides, which I'll enumerate very quickly for you, I hope. I've been studying architectural history for 50 years, if not a little bit more. I've been teaching architectural history for 45 years, the last 34 years of which I taught here at Case State. And in addition to that, I have two degrees in architecture, a bachelor's and a master's, and I have another third degree, doctoral degree, in art and architectural history. It's been, since I was appointed to the HRB, it's been a real learning experience for me. Learned a lot about historic preservation. I've done a little bit of historic preservation consultation in the past, but this has really immersed me in my retirement. It's given me something to do, and it eats up a significant amount of my time, and I really enjoy doing the research. In researching this proposal in preparation for tonight's deliberation and discussion, it became all the more clear to me that we really need a comprehensive preservation plan for the city as a whole because the current ordinance, which I think is Chapter 25 in the city codes, outlines the sorts of things that the Historic Resources Board ought to be doing. That was 1999, but since then, a lot has happened in the city in terms of historic preservation. For example, in 2007, the downtown historic district was formally listed on the National Register of Historic Places. 2009, the Houston and Pierre Street residential neighborhood was listed as a historic district on the National Register. 2019 was the Wolf House District on the National Register, and just recently, the Yuma Street, last year or so, on the Historic Register. And so what's happened over the years is there's been this sort of patchwork of activity in historic preservation districts especially, but other individual buildings as well, all throughout the city, and it's very likely that there may soon be proposals for other historic districts. I'm referring obliquely, I suppose, to the whole Sunset Avenue and Sunset Cemetery area. What the plan would do is bring some coherence to what our objectives are. Instead of sort of, you know, whack the mole, this problem comes up here and arbitrarily another one comes up here, this would give us a template by which we could operate. And would also give us the opportunity to revise the city codes and ordinances with respect to things like, now that we have a nationally registered historic downtown district, how do we deal with issues such as infill? If a building were to be demolished and somebody were to come back to that property in the historic district and want to build on it, what would be the guidelines that we would have in order to direct the architect, the developer? So infill projects is a good example, but also things like easements. And the plan could, historic preservation plan could give us some direction on what types of easements we might grant to property owners. There are tax, tax deductions one can take for certain types of easements, whether they're facade easements or landscape easements. Also, the plan would help us to, kind of losing my train of thought here for a minute, but, oh, it would allow for collaboration, too, I think, between different entities. The Historic Resource Board, working and understanding what the Preservation Alliance is doing, what the Riley County Museum is doing, that sort of thing. And so I think would bring more cohesiveness to that whole issue of historic preservation in the city. And one other aspect of a historic preservation plan, it could give us some direction on how we handle heritage tourism, which comes in a couple of different forms. There's national, natural heritage tourism, which would involve things like perhaps, you know, we're in the Flint Hills, and we have the Tall Grass Prairie, and I hear there's a herd of elk wandering around somewhere near the airport, and so that would be a draw for tourists. But then there's also cultural heritage tourism, and we have some wonderful stories to tell here in town, whether it's the university and how it was established within eight years of the founding of the city of Manhattan, and people would like to know that story, or whether it's Yuma Street and the Exodus Dusters, and that would give us the opportunity, and all sorts of projects we could embark upon with respect to wayfaring and, and so forth. So I see my time is almost up, but I want to thank you for just listening to me. Thanks very much.
I just have a quick question.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Um, this plan, do you know if it would kind of help us balance the need for preservation, but also, you know, we've been talking a lot about housing, and, and I know there's been some talk about trying to have some redevelopment in, in some of the older neighborhoods. How can that help us kind of balance those things? You know, obviously, we want to keep some of the historic buildings and things like that, but some of them, again, are just old.
Right.
So what's, how, how can, will this be able to help us kind of find that balance, do you think?
I think so. I think a historic preservation plan could give us some direction on what's significant and what's not, and how to judge that significance or not. Ben, maybe you can help me out here a little bit, too. But, yeah, it, it should be the sort of plan in my, in my, by my way of thinking that would balance the preservation of significant historic resources with the need for progress at the same time. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Yeah, I just think it's really important that we do look at the community as a whole.
Yeah.
Because I know that there's some areas near Lee School that have interesting, you know, a housing that was built in the 50s or 60s or that kind of thing. So, so often we think something has to be 150 years old to be of interest as far as preserve, historic preservation. But, yeah, I think that's a great idea.
You, you mentioned a very good point, Commissioner McCullough, because a number of buildings will be, have already come into that 50-year max that they must achieve in terms of their age, and there'll be a lot more soon coming, coming up for eligibility as well. And there's some really nice buildings potentially we could lose if they're not nominated in some way preserved.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate that. Is, is there any, anyone else that would like to make public comment on this topic?
Good evening. I'm Linda Glasgow, and I would like to divide my comments to my own and then my representation of an organization. Starting off, I'm the curator of library and archives at the Riley County Historical Museum. I would be delighted to assist in the research that might take place if we have a preservation professional help guide us in our decision-making in the future. Speaking as the president of the Manhattan-Riley County Preservation Alliance, we wholeheartedly endorse the idea of bringing in a preservation professional. It'll help make decisions, and it will focus our minds as to where we were when we did the Manhattan Historical Survey back in the late 70s, early 80s, and look at the pictures of the buildings in the historic districts, and then look at them today and see the tremendous asset that we have in our historic districts, and what they have done for our community and for the economy. So thank you very much for considering this, and on behalf of the Manhattan-Riley County Preservation Alliance, we hope you will vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to make public comment? Okay, seeing, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Are there any further commissioner comments? Now, we won't be voting on this item, so we want to be sure we, you know, give the right guidance to the city staff. And based on the discussion, it looks like we're probably unanimous in agreement that we should at least pursue the grant, and we'll work out the details later.
Yes, I, I concur.
Okay, so that's five of us. You should, we should be good to go?
Thank you.
Okay. Last item on the agenda tonight is executive session, and we're gonna need probably a little bit of time to hash this out. I'm thinking at least 30 minutes.
Okay.
And so...
7:15?
7:15. So I'll make the, the motion that we recess into executive session to discuss employment matters related to one or more employees pursuant to the exception, set forth in KSA 754319B1, allowing for discussion of personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and to resume the open meeting at 7:15 PM in the city commission room.
Beckett.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Mata.
Yes.
Mayor Butler.
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Chak.
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, we'll recess then into executive session until 7:15. Thank you. Okay, we'll recess then into executive session until 7:15. Thank you.
Seven forty-five. Okay, we need to make a motion to go back into executive session for another thirty minutes until seven forty-five.
I move that we return to executive session from seven fifteen to seven forty-five.
Second.
Can we have a motion and a second?
Can we say the whole motion?
What's that? What? We gotta read the whole thing?
Yeah, read the whole.
Okay, I'll read it. We need to recess into executive session to discuss employment manners related to one or more employees pursuant to the exception set forth in KSA seventy-five four-three-one-nine B-one, allowing for discussion of personnel manners of non-elected personnel and to resume the open meeting at seven forty-five PM in the City Commission Room.
Second.
Okay, now you can call the roll.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Adam Chack?
Yes.
Commissioner McCullough?
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt?
Yes.
Commissioner Mata?
Yes.
Okay, it's seven forty-five, so we can come out of executive session, and we didn't take any binding action, so that concludes the executive session, so do we have a motion